At this time, I would like to call the Board of Trustees meeting to order. Let the record reflect it is Thursday, September.
I'm going to take you off of mute so you can, um.
October?
I'm sorry, but Thursday, October twenty-four, and the time is ten oh three. Board Secretary, would you please call the room?
Trustee Ahuna will be joining shortly. Trustee Akaka.
Ayo.
Trustee Akina.
Aloha, my Kaku.
Trustee Alapa.
Present.
Trustee Galuteria.
You.
Trustee Suzan. Trustee Trask.
Present.
Trustee Wahe.
Present.
Chair Hulu Lindsey.
Present.
We have eight trustees. We have Quorum.
Thank you. Aloha, Kaku. Welcome to our Board of Trustees meeting. This meeting can be viewed and observed via livestream on OHA's website at www.oha.org/livestream. Joining us today, we have our Pohana CEO Stacy Ferrera. I would like to ask Stacy to introduce any administrative staff joining us today.
Mahalo, Chair. Aloha, Kakahiaka Kaku. Um, joining us today, we have our Chief Operating Officer, Keha Puu, Chief Financial Officer, Ramona Hink, Endowment Director, Ryan Lee, Interim Corporation Counsel, Everett Ota, Interim Senior Legal Counsel, Nichi Ozawa, Senior Director of Strategy and Implementation, Elena Farden, Senior Director of Wine Culture Affairs, Hailema Farden, Director of Education and Culture-Based Learning, Kuule Anuha Awanchan, Director of Economic and Business Resilience, Pony Askew, Director of Lad Assets, Tim Wong, Interim Information Technology Manager, Kevin Chalk, and IT Systems Engineer and Administrator, Daniel Santos. Mahalo.
Thank you. Before we start, I would like to announce that I will be deferring Agenda items three B, one, two, four, five, six, and three B seven on the agenda. It was canceled, and items three B nine through twelve were received under the seventy-two hour deadline due to the quick turnaround. We are having another meeting next week on October thirty-first, so I'm able to bring those items back should we decide to do so. First item on the agenda is the approval of minutes. Lehuah, do we have anyone signed up to speak on this agenda item?
No one has signed up to speak on this item.
Madam Chair, I'd like to move to approve the Board of Trustees meeting minutes for March twenty-eighth and, um, April twenty-fifth of two thousand and twenty-four.
Do we have a second? It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Role call.
Trustee Ahuna is not online yet. Trustee Akaka.
Aye.
Trustee Akina.
Aye.
Trustee Alapa.
Aye.
Trustee Galuteria.
Aye.
Trustee Suzan. Trustee Trask.
Aye.
Trustee Wahe.
Yes.
Chair Hulu Lindsey.
Yes.
Eight yes votes.
Thank you. Next on the agenda is item three A, workshop to discuss the development of a real estate strategy covering investment and non-investment property holdings of OHA, including Hakuanone, Kakakumakai development execution options. Do we have anyone signed up to speak on this item?
Um, no one has signed up to speak on this item.
Thank you. I'll turn the time over to our financial real estate consultant, Sam Jung.
Good morning, trustees. Um, this is a continuation of the real estate strategies that we had discussed in the last, um, board meeting and, um, answering some of the questions that came up. So I would like to introduce, um, Paul Quintilani and Linda Schatz, who are, um, subcontractors under my company, Peninsula Real Estate Partners, per the request of OHA, um, administration and trustees there under me as a sub. Thank you.
Thank you, Sam, and aloha, everybody, and mahalo for letting us be here again this morning. Um, our purpose today, as Sam mentioned, is to continue our discussion of the OHA real estate strategic plan. And today is the third workshop on this subject. Um, as you may recall, the impetus for developing a comprehensive real estate strategy stemmed from the March twenty-twenty-three internal audit. But as we believe, a well-informed strategy is really foundational for managing a portfolio the size of OHA's. And in fact, that was recognized by the OHA Board in two thousand and seven and in two thousand and fourteen when the organization adopted policies directing OHA's staff to prepare a real estate strategy for board review and approval. The benefits of a comprehensive strategy are many, and some of the ones that we've noted is it provides a blueprint for all facets of the business, including operating goals, business structure, and performance metrics. It aligns the resources of the company and the actions of its people with the desired outcomes of the organization. It provides strategic advantages over competitors, and it should boost efficiency and profitability. As we said, this is the third workshop on real estate strategy. The first workshop was held on September twentieth, and during that meeting, we focused on five key elements. We talked about the scope of our project and project phasing. We talked about the methodology used to develop a real estate strategy. We talked about the strategic principles that are already in place within the organization uh, that direct what should be done with real estate, real estate strategy, or provide governance collars on any strategy recommendations. The fourth element was an evaluation of the current state of OHA's real estate operations, and the fifth was a declaration of the desired state or desired outcomes for OHA. Then we met on the tenth, a couple weeks ago, and during this meeting, we recommended five strategies for OHA's investment lands and four strategies for OHA's legacy lands. And the discussion also included specific tactics to advance each of the strategic directives that we identified. And I believe that with the exception of the recommendations we made on Hakuanone, there appeared to be general agreement on the strategy and the proposed tactics. However, we were asked to hold a third workshop for the board to review alternatives on Hakuanone, which is the purpose of today's meeting. Once we conclude today's meeting, and assuming we get concurrence on the direction for Hakuanone, we will be prepared to finalize our strategy recommendations in the next day or two, and we will bring forth on October thirty-first um, an action item recommending the strategy uh, as well as a written strategy plan for your review and approval. Um, this document will detail all the work conducted over the past four months, and it'll be consistent with all the presentations we've done over the course of these three workshops. Uh, but you'll have that reported the next day or two, assuming that we get consensus today on Hakuanone. So let's turn to the discussion of Hakuanone. Um, and maybe Linda, go to the next slide. Thank you. So what we want to discuss today is the purpose of the Hakuanone investment, why did OHA take Taiwan in twenty-twelve, some history around, um, the asset. And we also want to discuss why it has been so difficult to advance Hakuanone over the past twelve years. What have been some of the barriers that have hindered success uh, against the goals, uh, and the investment purpose? We'll then review five alternatives for unlocking the embedded value in Hakuanone, including, as requested by many of the trustees, the pros and cons with each of those. And finally, we will rank our preferred recommendations, but with the understanding that it's ultimately the board's decision on how you want to move forward with this. And if you want to move away from our recommendation, that's fine. We believe that you can execute against any of these options with the possible, well, not the possible, with the exception of status quo. We don't think status quo is a achievable option, but any of the other four options, we think are viable. So Hakuanone is part of the investment lands. Um, and as a result, the primary purpose is to achieve an investment return of five percent real on the investment and/or exceed industry benchmarks. So you primarily own Hakuanone for financial benefits. But we also note in the Hakuanone strategy, uh, Makai policy, uh, the Kakakumakai policy, that there are some other mission-related desired outcomes. And one of those is to create a pico in urban Honolulu that is a gathering place for native Hawaiians. And this could include and probably will include dedicating a significant portion of the site to a cultural or programmatic element. So that's why we own Hakuanone. Over the course of the ownership, however, none of these objectives have really been realized. You know, it transferred in twenty-twelve at an ascribed value of two hundred million, which was based on an appraised about, an appraisal that was done by the state and reviewed and concurred on by OHA's own appraisers. And at the time of the transfer, it was understood that residential uses were prohibited, but it was still ascribed a value of two hundred million. Switch over to the next slide, please. More recently, there's been, uh, I think we jumped one too many. Sorry. Hmm, okay. Uh, more recently, there's been an appraisal that was done that placed the value at forty-three point six million dollars. Um, and this value, um, was based on the current zoning and assumed a bulk purchase. So, um, clearly, the economic returns haven't been achieved on this investment. Nevertheless, OHA has undertaken multiple efforts over the last few years and to jumpstart this development, including the two thousand and thirteen efforts by Group Seventy, the, um, efforts by the WCIT group in two thousand and fourteen, and more recently, Kuole. And there's been about ten million that's been spent on these various planning efforts. And there's been a lot of really good work that's been done. There's been extensive community outreach. There's been multiple feasibility analyses that were performed. There's been, uh, an, uh, issue identification. Uh, there's been an assessment of planning requirements and available infrastructure. Um, but OHA hasn't sustained any of these studies beyond that planning phase. Once the reports are generated, uh, the efforts tend to stop, and now a lot of that information is dated. Sorry, uh, one more, please. Oh, no, stay here. Stay here. Start. Go back. Uh, yeah, so we talked about this. I'm sorry, I jumped over this slide. Um, in two thousand and twenty-two, there was an appraisal at forty-three point six million dollars, which assumed one buyer. Um, there is currently about two point five million of income generated from Hakuanone, which is, uh, kind of a watershed year because the last two years prior, it wasn't generating, um, over a one point five million. And so I think on a big picture scheme, OHA's investment objectives have not been met. I mean, if you, if you assume a two hundred million dollar value, the cash-on-cash return is only one point two percent. You could do better in T-bills today, right? You could do better in a bank account today. And assuming that the two thousand and twenty-two appraisal is correct, the investments lost over two-thirds to three-quarters of its investment. And over a twelve-point, twelve-year period, Hakuanone has not achieved a five percent real rate of return. That's indisputable. Um, and had OHA invested that money in two thousand and twelve, today, two hundred million would be worth about five hundred million at an eight percent rate of return. So by comparison, this has not been a great investment. And in addition to that, none of the cultural objectives have been met. So why is that the case? And we think there's a couple of reasons for that. And the first is there hasn't been a consensus vision as to what Hakuanone should be. Nor has there been a consensus on how it should be developed. Should that be through a sale, a joint venture, a ground lease, or should OHA self-perform? So consensus vision and a consensus on the operational strategy to execute. In addition, OHA doesn't have the staff internally that could put together an executable plan, uh, because there's not enough staff, and there's absolutely some missing skill sets within the current staff. And there's not a full-time focus on this. OHA has a lot of other conflicting, uh, mission-related purposes. And so you're not going to focus on Hakuanone full-time. That's understandable. There's been a failure to maintain consultant continuity. As I mentioned, you've had a lot of consultants that have done a lot of good work, but when they finish preparing the master plan, then they tend to go away, and then nothing's done. And then a couple of years later, the master plan becomes stale, and then the effort needs to be resumed. So there's no continuity of effort. As to the board, you know, a lot of the decisions have to come to the board, and development happens in real time. And so when you're waiting for the board to meet so they can make critical decisions, oftentimes the opportunities go by the side, or decisions that need to be made get delayed, and that pushes the development further and further out. I think one of the other issues has been OHA has been focusing on the zoning it wants rather than the zoning is in place. And there's probably, um, some development activity that could occur with the current zoning that's there. Um, but it's obviously not going to be the mixed-use residential that OHA has tried to achieve a couple of times in the past, um, and several of the plans advocated for. Um, but there, you know, needs to be some effort maybe to just focus on the zoning you have and just get started. Move something forward that's, that's favorable and accretive. Another really big issue is that to, to move forward with development, there's fifteen to twenty million dollars in studies that probably need to be done. These are infrastructure studies, planning studies, archaeological studies. Uh, so there's a lot of effort that needs to be met and money that needs to be spent to advance to the point where you can start to move that first spade of dirt. Little bit related to governance, but, um, uh, is that OHA is a political body? It's not a development entity. Um, a lot of discussions have to happen at the OHA Board level within the, um, uh, confines of the Sunshine Laws. In development, a lot of things are very sensitive. Doesn't really work well when you're having those kinds of conversations in a Sunshine Law-type environment. Um, and because you're a political body, your board switches out quite frequently. Um, and it can change vision. And in development, there needs to be some continuity and consistency. It's hard to change out vision every two years or every four years. The development cycles don't always correspond to, uh, election cycles. And I don't mean that to disparage the board. You guys serve a very useful purpose, but it's different than what a development board might look like. And I think lastly, and we've heard this from a number of people, is you're not getting a lot of support from the development community because they're, they're skeptical that OHA can execute on this. And we've heard that from a number of people. So how do we fix that? Well, one option is an LLC, and that's what we're going to talk about. But before we do, let's just talk about what an LLC is. And in, in simple terms, it's a limited liability company, and it's a business structure. And almost all real estate investors and operating companies use LLCs. It's designed to limit the amount of financial risk for an owner. And the owner of an LLC can be a person. It can be another legal entity like a corporation or a partnership. And an LLC can be a single-member LLC, or it can have multiple members. And the way that the owners exercise control over an LLC is through something called an operating agreement. And in the operating agreement, there may be a managing member who makes the day-to-day decisions, all the things that you need to do daily as it relates to the ownership management or development of real estate, but major decisions. Things like sale of the property, major capital outlets, new acquisitions, financings, selection of a joint venture partner, master plan vision. Those things can be reserved for the owners through the operating agreement. So when, one of the questions that was asked last week is, well, the, does the board have control? And the answer that we tried to give you is that day-to-day, you want to cede control. You need to cede control if you want this development to move forward. But through the operating agreement, you have control on major decisions. And we can define what those major decisions are, but it needs to be something that is workable so that the project can move forward on the day-to-day stuff, but also sufficient enough that the board feels that it's got enough controls that it's meeting its fiduciary obligations and also that the project is moving forward in a way that the board wants. So that's the delicate balance. So we looked at five options. Uh, one of them is to try and continue with the status quo, which is conduct land planning and make limited horizontal improvements without modifying away from the OHA structure and just try and do it the way you're doing it today. And as I think you'll hear from us, we do not recommend that. We think that is the least viable option. Uh, past history would tell you that this will not be successful. So if we don't do that, what are the other options? Well, one of them is to just, just admit that this isn't working and sell the property in bulk. And try and get as much money as you can, or maybe go back to the state and have the state, uh, take control of Hakuanone and proceed with, you know, with, with, with other activities. That's an option, and we think you can do that. The third option is a master joint venture where you bring in a development partner who can execute, but you don't set up an LLC and you do this within the OHA structure. We'll talk about that because ultimately this will require an LLC for the entity, but OHA can control its portion through the OHA structure. Another option is to do what I would call a master ground lease, where you find a development partner, but rather than do a joint venture, you enter into a master ground lease, uh, and that party will execute on the development program. And we'll talk about the pros and cons of that. And then the last is to set up a independent LLC with a separate board and a separate staff that's governed through an operating agreement that gives OHA as the owner control over major decisions, but the day-to-day is handled by a separate staff with separate governance. We think those are the, the, the five options that OHA should consider. So let's look at each one of those and the pros and cons against each. So status quo. Um, we rate this as high risk because you've shown no ability to effectively execute with this strategy and low return because, you know, you, you, you haven't been able to demonstrate that this can achieve any kind of, of risk-adjusted rate of return. The pros to this are it doesn't require a change in any legal structure. We don't think your stakeholders will be concerned because there's no new legal structure, and there's a lot of stakeholder transparency, and those are important things. I don't want to diminish those. But the con is nothing's being modified to improve the future outcomes. Your Sunshine Laws make sensitive development discussions almost impossible. You lack expertise with your current staff, and your, and your pay structure isn't going to let you attract the staff that you need to execute on Hakuanone, which means that you're going to need to use external consultants, and they're not always aligned with your organizational goals. You still have to deal with the OHA governance structure. Um, and you're going to assume a lot of the development risk without any of the LLC protections or liabilities. And let's talk about that for a moment. Let me give you an example of what I'm talking about there. We know that that bulkhead, the revetment on Lot, on Lot A, is compromised. And at some point, there's a very distinct possibility that that bulkhead is going to fail, and then there's going to be a slide of your lands into Kiwalo Basin. And your lands have contamination on them. And OHA is the upland owner that hasn't maintained that bulkhead. It's going to potentially have financial liability against that. Okay? If you had an LLC, your liability would be limited to the value of the LLC. If it sticks with OHA, your liability is with OHA. And that's one of the reasons you have an LLC. It limits your liability. And the last con to this is OHA will fund all the project costs. So another option is to say, okay, we get that. OHA doesn't really do good development. We don't want to set up an LLC. Maybe we should just sell the land. And this is a low-risk strategy. Uh, we also think it's going to generate the lowest returns because you're not going to participate in any of the development upside. But the pros to this is you absolutely can execute this in OHA's current structure. And you absolutely can execute this with your current staff. Probably needs some outside advisors, but your current staff and your current structure, this would be an easy thing to do. And I think as a positive too, is that there's a lot of time and money that's being spent on Hakuanone over the years. You can redirect all of those resources to mission-related outcomes rather than focusing on development in Kakakumakai. And the sale proceeds could be reinvested through the Native Hawaiian Trust Fund to, to higher-yielding investments more compatible with your staff skill sets. And ultimately, it also takes away the sea-level rise risk that this portfolio in Hakuanone represents or, or has as a potential risk. And OHA doesn't have to take on development. Those are all great reasons to do a sale. Um, the downside, you know, you might have some beneficiary concerns or, or, or disgruntlement with selling land. We understand that. Um, a bulk sale to one party is going to be priced at a heavy discount to two hundred million dollars. When you saw the appraisals, it maybe it's forty-three, maybe it's fifty, maybe it's more, right? Um, it is a complex transaction. It's probably going to require option payments and phase takedowns. It might not happen all at once. Um, if the counterparty can lift residential, maybe there's some PR risk that would, uh, OHA would be uncomfortable with. Uh, and finally, uh, and I don't think this is a risk so much as it's just a, a, a condition. Some of these lands are ceded lands, and you've got to go back to the legislature for approval. So another option is to execute it in a joint venture. And as a joint venture, you're going to undertake some development risk. Um, so instead of being low risk, we think this is medium to high risk. But you're also, should be getting higher returns than just an outright sale. So again, your returns are medium to high, so higher risk, higher returns. Makes sense. And the pros to this is we do think that your current staff, uh, has the skill sets to execute a joint venture, but you're going to need some outside advisors to, to go forward with that. And then your outside partner is going to bring the development skills so you don't have to build, build those internally. You just let your partner do it. Uh, your partner's also going to bring the capital to fund the pre-development activities. Now, of course, that's going to dilute your percentage ownership, so you're indirectly paying for it. But you don't have to come out of pocket to fund that fifteen to twenty million dollars. And you also don't have to staff internally for development because now you've got a joint venture partner that can do the development. And because you have an entity that you've selected that knows development, there's a much higher probability for favorable financial outcomes. On the downside, you know, your, your partner is going to share in the profits, so you're not going to get a hundred percent of the profits. Maybe that's okay because you don't have to spend all the money to get there, and you don't have to design your organization, but it is a trade-off. The partner's vision may be different than OHA's vision, and because they are bringing the development expertise, they're going to have more control than OHA. They are also going to use an LLC structure. So if LLCs are a concern, understand that in a joint venture, there will be an LLC. That's who will own the land. Um, the board will have some controls over major decisions, but the joint venture partner is going to be the managing member, and they're going to have most of the day-to-day decision-making. And as we said, indirectly, you're going to prepare, pay for a pro-rata share of the pre-development costs and the overhead. Uh, this is kind of being figured out still, but there may be tax consequences if you form a joint venture. And if you select the wrong joint venture partner, it really leads to. it really leads to severe adverse outcomes. So when you select a partner, that's a big decision. And we're going to have to really be clear what we're looking for in a partner and that they have the capabilities financially and otherwise uh, to sustain development over a 20 year period because that's how long this development will go forward. And again, legislative approvals might be needed. So the next option is, okay, well, we don't want to partner. Don't like that option. Let's do a master ground lease. And this is lower risk. Because you're not taking the vertical development risk. But also lower return. Uh, ground leasing is more like a bond like return than it is like a development like return. Uh, there's some ways we can improve those return through participating ground leases, but it's still going to be overall a much lower return. Um, the benefits to this are limited development risk for OHA under a ground lease. It's not zero, but you're not taking a lot of the vertical risk. Um, OHA will absolutely limit its capital outlays as a master ground lessor. Those will be largely response, the responsibility of the master lessing. And OHA will not have the staff to manage a ground lease. Uh, you'll need some advisors to get the ground lease negotiated. But once it's in place, the staff should be able to manage that, or you should be able to manage it with a limited amount of external advisors. Uh, and once the ground leases are matureded, it's a secure, stable source of income to fund OHA's mission well into the future. The downside to it is, and I've, I've tried to do this before, tried to negotiate a master ground lease over KS's um, Kakako properties. It is incredibly complex. Um, and you're going to need sophisticated external advisors throughout the property. And there's no certainty you're going to get to a place that makes sense. Um, the master ground leases that we've seen that are effective usually don't tie the developer down long term. They're usually more like options. And they do some planning against everything, but they take down parcels individually. And if the development goes sideways, they just have the ability to walk away. So it's, it's, you're not really locking them in for a long term. Uh, another downside is many developers won't build under a ground lease. So your universe of potential development partners is going to be smaller under a master ground lease than it would under a joint venture. And that generally means lower pricing. Uh, the ground leasing is going to generate lower returns. Um, the board of trustees will have limited control over the development. You're seeding it to the less see under the ground lease. And so your, your controls will be limited to those that you set forth in the ground lease. And much like the joint venture, if you choose the wrong counterparty, it could be difficult to unwind the master grounds. So the other option is we discussed is this, and this is the one we recommended last, last time we met. Is to form a single purpose LLC that is staffed owned by OHA, but it's separately staffed and has a separate board. Uh, and that board would be real estate experts could, who could actually help guide the development. And we like this op- option because we think it provides OHA indirect control while seeding the day to day decision making to properly experienced professionals. And we think that this mitigates your risks. It also solves some of your staffing limitations by aligning staff compensation with the market under this separate LLC. And it brings together a board who can also contribute to the vision of this development. Uh, and provide needed oversight to a development program that would be hard to do with, within the OHA structure. Um, the OHA board can nominate and appoint board members that you trust. Liability will be contained within the LLC. And it allows OHA to step away from focus on development. Let the LLC do that and OHA can focus on mission related. Um, uh, things that are important to OHA as an organization. Uh, it also overcomes the challenges of developing within the OHA structure. And finally, it would eliminate the need to put in policies and procedures specific to development in the OHA um, policy manuals. The downside to this is there's no obvious capital funding plan outside of sale of one parcel or an infusion capital of OHA. There's going to need to be some monies, fifteen to twenty million dollars spent upfront to do land planning, infrastructure planning, environmental analysis, archaeological analysis, and some potential horizontal improvements. Uh, there's got to be a funding plan for that. And that this, you know, on your joint venture, it's your partner under a ground lease, it's your partner under a sale, it's whoever buys it. Under this single purpose LLC, OHA or the LLC have to figure out how to do that. Also, the two million in cash flow that OHA is receiving every year from Hakuan A now is going to be with the LLC and most likely their, part of their funding plan, they're going to reinvest that back in to development to earn those higher returns. Eventually you'll see more money, but in the near term you'll see no money. There's going to be higher overhead costs. Um, OHA still has the development risks. The income might be subject to taxation. We think we can structure around that, but we have to figure that out. Uh, legislative approval is going to be required likely for the LLC transfer. And while it's under OHA control, you know, we can see scenarios where the new entity, because it's separate, might be at odds with the, with the board of trustees changing priorities. And you got to figure out a way to resolve those things. And those are, those are real tensions that can happen with subsidiaries. And finally, and we, we heard this last time we were there, we know that there are stakeholder concerns with this because of some of the history with LLCs. Um, at the end of the day, I don't think the LLC was the problem. Historically, you know, if people are going to do things that are um, unethical or anything like that, you know, they can do that within the OHA structure. They can do that within an LLC structure. An LLC structure is just a structure. People have to act ethically and honorably. Uh, and if they're not, you know, you're going to have bad outcomes, whether it's with OHA or whether it's in an LLC. So with that, you know, our recommendation is we rank them. We still believe the single purpose LLC is the best structure. But we understand that at the end of the day, this is your decision. We're not here to sell you anything. Uh, you, we, we can adopt any strategy that, that makes this most sense for the board. Um, our, our hierarchy of, of, of other options would be a joint venture because you get to participate in the upside. Um, a bulk sale because you would receive those funds today and could invest them. We think a master ground lease is the most difficult. And as we said before, we, we think status quo is not even an option. So with, with all of that, again, we're opening us up for questions. I know what I talked again, too, probably too much. Um, but once you, once there's some consensus on how you want to approach Hakuan A, we'll drop that into the overall strategy document that we're preparing for you. And we'll bring all of our recommendations forward on the 31st. And with that, thank you for listening and I'll take any questions or comments.
Trustees, questions? Trustee Galutaria?
Thank you, Chair. Paul and Linda Aloa, thank you guys. Uh, a, a few questions. How many master plans has OHA had since acquiring this piece in 2012?
Um, the, they've had a master plan in 2013 that was performed by Group 70. And then they did a master plan in 2014, 2015 that was done by WCIT. Um, there was a study, it was more of a financial study, not a master plan that was performed by Kool-Aid for Hakuan A. But I wouldn't call it a master plan. It was more of a financial exercise to look at um, what would be the financial returns to OHA with and without uh, residential entitlements.
So three, you'd say?
Two and a half.
Two and a half. Uh, another question?
Mm-hmm. Go ahead.
Uh, HCD A has been a formidable opponent to anything that we want to do on the property. And if I recall, uh, you know, going up, you got to clear the 200 feet to get to the 400 that we want to make this profitable. What is the, uh, would you say that, uh, the opposition or the challenges with HCD A remain today?
Linda, you want to take that one?
Yeah, yeah, um. Yeah, I, I think HCD A, um, their position is always staked upon what the loudest community voices are. Um, and of course they also, uh, to a certain degree, try to represent the interests of landowners as well in certain contexts. So I think they try to do a very overall perspective on what the community wants. And I think what they hear is that the community doesn't necessarily want residential. However, I do think that there is a degree of uh, uh, smaller voices being louder than the majority uh, in this instance. Um, so I wouldn't say that that couldn't change over time. But I think that if OHA really does want to look at efforts, I think Paul's point about taking um, an effort and pushing on existing zoning and trying to do what we can with what we have now is going to be really important and creating a, um, a, a, a cultural hub um, to build that community support for a future vision is going to be key to that effort.
Which brings it to my next question, if you don't mind. Thank you. Um, the neighbors, our neighbors are big landowners like Kamaua Schools, Howard Hughes, maybe even A and B. What's the temperature of the water in our relationship with the guys who live across the street? I'm talking about the landowners. Are they up, opposing? I would assume they're opposing, uh, large development, correct?
Kamaua is not opposing. In fact, they submitted a letter of support.
Okay. What about Howard Hughes? Anybody?
Uh, I, I, I wouldn't, um, and I don't want to sort of speak for them necessarily, but I think most developers, I would say are um, always supportive of trying to add additional housing in the area. But no, everybody is very cautious uh, about how they approach it, right? Because of the political winds and, and sentiment that's out there. So um, uh, I, I would say at this point, you know, um, no one has come out vocally on it in, in that way, but um, I think mostly developers are very positive if there's an effort to have residential anywhere on Oahu or in Hawaii because we need housing. So I, I, I can't say that as a factor.
I see. Sammy, you wanted to say?
Yes, um, I do know that Howard Hughes is on their last parcel development in Kakako. So I would think they would be supportive if it, OHA desires to do a joint venture. Uh, if there's a sale, I would think they'd be all over it.
I see, I see. Okay. And, and finally, just one more, if you don't mind. Uh, has there been any discussion about trading out for other parcels? Uh, you know, getting OHA out of Makai. There was early talk when I was in the Senate about, uh, the, the rail. And the transit oriented development that comes along 20 stops. Has there been any discussion with the state about that possibility at all?
Um, I, I believe in 2022, there was some discussion about unwinding the 2012 transaction and either giving OHA cash or lands or some combination of that. But I don't know if there's been anything since then.
I see, I see. Because transit developer in the, the, I think, correct me if I'm wrong, but it's like three miles around every station along the 20, 20 stops. And there's no restrictions on height on that. Just as a consideration maybe for future dialogue, right? Okay. Thank you very much, Chair.
Trustee Trask?
I have some questions I wanted to ask. Uh, the, the two presenters, Paul and Linda. Uh, does OHA have a contract with Peregrine? Does OHA have a contract with Peregrine?
I'll let Everett Oda, the corporate counsel respond to your question regarding the contracts.
No, excuse me. I'd like to get the answer from yourself. Does my office have a contract with you? I've spent months going through our record. I cannot find any contract that we have with Peregrine or Shatz. Do we have a direct contract with you or are you subcontractors of Sam Chung and Peninsula?
We're a subcontractor with Sam.
Yes, both of you are? Both? Because you're responding. Where is Linda Shatz on this? Linda?
I'm, I'm a subcontractor. Trustee Trask, I am a subcontractor to Peregrine. And Peregrine is a subcontractor to Peninsula.
Ah, yes. When I review the contract with my office, I do not find any contract from you two. Also, I do not find any deliverables. What I do find is three years of payments to Sam Chung at about a hundred grand per year. I don't have any deliverables for the last three years. Have you sent anything to my office, whether to the trustees or not? Because I understand that your arrangement with my office is that you work with the administration and the chair. And when I looked at my own records, I didn't have any reports from yourself, Linda, or from Peregrine.
Trustee Trask, I'm going to be, I'm going to ask our CEO to answer your question.
Excuse me, our CEO wasn't, excuse me, our CEO wasn't here. Our CEO came in the last year. I would like to get the answers that I'm from the contractors. They're not our contractors. They're Peninsula's contractors. But in Peninsula's agreement with us, we did not agree to their services. It's not a question for Stacy. She wasn't even here. Could I please get the answer?
Uh, Paul, I mean, uh, Everett, can you please, uh, give trustee Trask some information on the um, Sam Chung's contract?
Uh, yes, thank you, Chair, and good morning, trustees. Um, the, uh, uh, again, the work of Peregrine is, uh, as a subcontractor to Peninsula uh, real estate, the, uh, Peninsula Real Estate Company with Sam Chung uh, has been under contract with OHA as a board consultant on real estate matters. Uh, and as I've previously described, uh, the work of, um, the subcontracts are small, you know, within the scope, uh, of the original, uh, Peninsula contract. Um, this is again advising on real estate matters, which is what um, they, uh, Peninsula, uh, was brought on. Uh, this type of services, Peninsula was provide, uh, brought on to provide. Uh, and then the work of Peregrine relating more to the real estate strategy, um, was brought before this board um, back in May of 2024. Um, what we described, that expanded work, which was also to be, um, supportive of our, um, uh, OHA's response to, uh, the state auditor's report and those deficiencies that were identified, um, in our real estate planning.
Everett, your response is false. Trustees, trustees and admin, be aware that I am advised now because of this matter that it should be brought to the FBI. Contracts have been made and established. I will follow up on this when I leave the office. Until that time, you are on notice. Every time you waive this 72 hour rule, you violated the sunshine law. Never did this board ever review or vote to pay the costs for Mr. Sam Chung's organization or subcontractors. We paid this man a hundred thousand for three years, no deliverables. I'm advised now by the FBI that I will finish my term. I'm advised now by the FBI that I will finish my term and they will begin to work with me on this matter. They did not close the investigation that was open three years ago when Kili'i Akina and I took them the records. They did not forget about it. Be cautious, trustees, because you are voting on this. And what I have done right now is inform you about what is going on. I did not hire Linda Schatz. I did not hire Peregrine. I've paid out a hundred thousand for three years with no product. And you bring this to me with Everett? When the complaint proceeds federally, it will name those who are employed by us, including counsel. Give notice to your attorneys now. This is a public record. And I would caution the trustees about proceeding, trustees. I happen to know that I'm the only one in this office that went and looked at Sam Chung's contract. Not a single one of you did. And if you had that, you would know that there are no, there was no permission given to hire and to pay for Peregrine or, uh, the Schatz Group.
Okay, um, trustees, any further questions of, um, the consultant?
Um. I have one last question. I'd like to see your contracts. Linda Schatz, and, uh, Paul, can you send me your contracts with my office? Be careful, because all of this is gonna go to the feds. You know, I'm not married to a congressman, but some of you are.
Okay, um, if there's no further question, do you have final, um, uh, notes, Paul, for us?
Um, well, so what I was hoping to accomplish today, and, um, you know, again, this was at the request of the the board members from the tenth, was to present these alternatives with Hakone and see if there was a consensus as to, you know, whether the LLC, joint ventures, sale, master ground leases were the, was the preferred course of action, because uh, absent anything, you know, our, our recommendation would still be the single purpose LLC. We'll wrap up our strategy report, uh, today, tomorrow, and we would submit it, and then everything would be ready for the thirty-first. But if that's not the direction or the wishes of the board, and they want to go with a joint venture or a master ground lease or a sale, we would make that switch, finalize our recommendations, and still be ready to go on the thirty-first. But we would be, uh, we don't want to, um, to, um, ill serve this board by making a recommendation that the board is not yet prepared to adopt. Um, so we're, you know, we're looking for some feedback on that specific recommendation. I felt everything else on the tenth, we had general consensus on.
Trustee Yehi.
Let me. Um, Paul, you know, um, my understanding when, uh, when you, when you move the assets into the, an LLC, um, once it's there, if we get an offer later to, a good offer to sell the properties, we can't sell it anymore, right?
No, that's not true. You could do anything you want to within the LLC.
Okay. Um. I, okay, how, I, well, when, when when we wanted to take the Waimea Valley, well, well, when we were asking about possibly taking the Waimea Valley properties out of the LLC, I was, we were told that, um, uh, we, we couldn't do that, like, they pretty much owned it now, and we, we, we couldn't just take it back unless they gave it back, and the guy advising us said he wouldn't advise him to give it back to us. So.
So I, I don't, I have not reviewed the LLC agreement for Waimea Valley, uh, not in our scope of work to do that. But, um, it, that, what you're describing sounds like something in the formation documents. Uh, the way we would set up the LLC for Hakone would give, again, the board of, of, of trustees um, more latitude in contributing lands or dissolving the LLC, things like that. We would, we would never leave uh, the board without an ability to recapture those lands if the LLC were failing. That would be, that would be, that would be a, a misservice to you.
The other, um, the other issue that I had with the LLCs too is that, uh, at one time, um, how do I say this? Uh. So at one time, the RM Committee, um, wanted to get, like, a list of the contracts from, from the LLCs. And, uh, the director of the LLCs, um, said, well, you know, I don't just, um, take orders from one trustee, even if it's the RM Chair, which, to be honest, that's, that was a fair enough um, uh, point of view. So the committee got the got the, the full committee to, the full board, uh, of at least five people to request the contracts, and for some reason, Seville Beat wrote an article about that meeting. And then, and the, the next day, the director wrote this really bizarre article for Seville Beat saying that, um, you know, I, I was not trying to keep the information from the trustees. I just didn't want to give it to one trustee who would just share it with only another trustee and not with the full board, and then make us look bad. And by the way, the administrator is not at fault for anything in the audit. It's all the trustees. And I'm going to set up a website exposing them for all their corruption, right? And, and I was like, this person just used her position, used, um, I, I mean, resources that we pay for because we basically are funding this whole LLC pretty much ourselves to promote a political agenda, and then we couldn't even fire this person, like, because the Board of Directors, they didn't want to fire this person for doing that. So my question is, I, I don't know, like, are, are, are you saying that we can set up the LLC so that that kind of thing isn't gonna happen?
Well, look, there, anytime you have a separation of governance, um, there are issues that need to be worked out. Uh, the, the things that you described, like, you know, contracts, things like that. One of the things that would be set up in the operating agreement are reporting requirements by the LLC back to the owners. Uh, because OHA is the single owner. OHA remains the owner, even though you set up this structure to manage the day-to-day, OHA is still the single member owner. And therefore, it, you know, it has super controls, including not limited to firing the Board of Directors and dissolving the LLC. Right? You, you've got all those powers as the board, as, as I envisioned this being set up. So, um, but is it possible that the board that you set up and the staff that the board hires to run Hakone is sometimes going to be at odds with what the Board of Trustees for OHA wants? It, it's absolutely a possibility. I'm not going to say that's, that's a, a zero probability. You have to work through those things. And the venue, the, the vehicle to maintain your control is the operating agreement, and your ultimate power is to dissolve the board and dissolve the LLC.
Okay.
Trustee Yehi, if I may add. Um, the LLC, it, it's a very flexible structure. So you could put different things in there. I mean, what Paul mentioned earlier, major decisions, a sale, financing, major capital costs, that could be all reserved, uh, to the right of the board to, 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 to decide. As well as some of the stuff that you mentioned, if there's reporting requirements that you want to put into LLC specific to, um, OHA, that could be put in there as well. So it, it, it gives a very flexible structure to control, have, you know, some control over what happens within the LLC that the, that the property's in.
Can we, like, fire the, can we fire that, can the board have the power to fire the, the director of the LLC?
No, no, you usually have, you will have the power to fire the board or reappoint the board, but not fire staff.
That's correct. You could, you could request it, obviously, or you, you could vote on it. Um, you know, if, uh, the, the, the board decides that that's a appropriate action, then, you know, that, that would happen. But you can't do it directly. It would have to be a, a board decision.
Trustee Akina?
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair. Paul and Linda, I appreciate your presentation. It's very well organized and, uh, to the point. Um, I, I want to circle back to a matter that was raised, uh, in a previous workshop. And, and that is Evi Lay. Um, the development of Hakone will certainly have an impact upon our capacity to take any development, uh, measures at Evi Lay and vice versa. Development of Evi Lay would, from a capital perspective, impact our capacity to move forward in Hakone. I, I kind of recall, Paul, you mentioning that, uh, one of the factors in not recommending the immediate development of Evi Lay was the, um, uh, ability we have to rely on the ongoing revenue streams that we have in Evi Lay. Uh, I, I, I would love to see, I, I think we would like to, uh, I would love to see if you could show us the analysis, uh, in your, just, in your recommendation that we not move forward on Evi Lay. Um, when I, when I look at that, there are also some revenue streams that are not being realized. Our five oh one Sumner property is, is completely vacant. Um, and we, we lost a tenant, a large one at five hundred North Nimitz. But, um, would appreciate hearing your thoughts on why we should not look at developing Evi Lay in light of this, the desire to develop Hakone.
I, I put some, um, notes together for, um, Stacy, uh, about a week, week and a half ago. Um, maybe that's something you could circulate, Stacy. It's, it's much more comprehensive than anything I could discuss here today, but I think our, our recommendations fall on sort of high level. You, you've got tenant leases in place that, that you can't just terminate because those tenants have options that run out for forty-five years. You're generating, in our view, a sufficient income stream that the current use represents the highest and best use. We don't dispute that development's, you know, going to be viable in the future. We just don't think that development would be accretive to the current uses that exist today. So for, for those reasons, we'd recommend staying course with Evi Lay today. You know, and eventually, it's going to be a development. We just don't think it's something that should be tackled today. And, but I have a much fuller analysis with numbers and all kinds of things that I sent to Stacy last week that be happy to shit, have her share with you.
Sure. Does that take into consideration the development plans of others in surrounding, um, Evi Lay?
Yeah, so Linda can speak to that maybe a little bit better than I can about how to handle the fact that others are developing around us.
Including infrastructure development that's around.
Yeah, so what we do know about the TOD overlays are, are that there are some pretty high densities that you can achieve through community benefit. Right? So floor area ratios of seven to up to about ten point, ten point O, which is very similar, I would say, to Waikiki, um, frankly. And, um, the way you achieve those is by putting a plan together, negotiating with council and with the county on what kind of benefits you could provide. Some of that being housing benefits, some of that being, you know, a community park, um, and, and things of that nature. Um, so it is a negotiated discussion. It's not a by right density that you're given just because you're in the TOD area. And so with respect to others that are developing, um, they are developing their plans and they're kind of sharing, I think, to a certain degree, what kind of densities they'll be looking at. One of the things that OHA needs to do is just maintain that at some point in the future, you're going to maximize the available density that you can achieve. So if it's FAR ten point O, then, you know, at some point in the future, you want to reserve that right to be have access to that amount of density in the area. And so when they calculate their infrastructure, when they calculate ingress and egress and traffic and roadways, um, and that type of thing that they have to fold you guys in, they should assume that, you know, you're, you're going to be planning, um, you know, in, into the future with that maximum capacity. And so the job today for OHA and the staff is to make sure that all your options are open, um, especially given in light that you have these leases that are covering the site now. But being present at those meetings and making sure that the, that they know that you will be availing yourself of that maximum capacity and density is important so you don't shortchange yourself in the future, and even, you know, uh, uh, shortchange yourself on off-site infrastructure that could be available to you. But it's, it's a little, you know, a little bit of art and science, but, but OHA needs to keep their options open and, and continue to communicate that with county, state, and federal government.
Thank you, Linda. I appreciate that, and, uh, appreciate what you've shared with us, Paul. Uh, just, Madam Chair, to, to my colleagues, I would just like to say, I would feel a lot more comfortable if we, uh, had a good, um, discussion and, um, a, not only an assessment, but a decision amongst us as to the timetable, a likely timetable for moving forward on Evi Lay, uh, because, um, we want to make sure that by foregoing, if we're foregoing development of Evi Lay, that that's the right decision to make. Uh, the other thing I think we need to have discussion on is, um, the LLCs in terms of what the, um, state auditor has written in, in, in the past. Uh, the state auditor has, uh, indicated instances of the use of LLCs and the behavior of LLCs as problematic for us as also our forensic views, um, referenced as well. Uh, we may need some legal counsel on that as we look at interpreting and how to structure LLCs. Um, I, I think that, um, there's a lot there for us to, to consider.
Okay. Thank you, trustee. Um, Sam?
Trustee Akina, if I may speak on the, uh, Evi Lay property a little bit. What Paul mentioned is, it's not necessarily not doing anything in Evi Lay. It, it's, it's a matter of timing.
Okay.
You have, you have existing leases, you have, um, you know, pretty good income. Um, you know, if a redevelopment was supposed to, if you could do redevelopment there, then you would have to figure out what to do with those tenants, and possibly you move them onto this property and allow, you know, you, you're gonna have to do some swapping to make that happen. And I think the urgency right now obviously is, is on Hakone because it's not performing. So it's just a matter of timing and priority is, is what I think generally, uh, what the recommendation is. That's why Evi Lay is not at the forefront and Hakone is. Thank you.
Okay, Paul, um, are you through, um, with, uh, we're done with questions here?
So, um, if, um, if, if, let me, let me, let me throw a straw man out here because I'm um, wanting to keep the thirty-first open, but also trying to be respectful of, of what I'm hearing today from, from the discussion. So it, it doesn't feel like there's a consensus on how this board wants to proceed today with Hakone in terms of structuring, whether that's a joint venture, an LLC, a master ground lease, or an outright sale. Um, if, if that's in fact the case, then since that's such a critical pillar of the real estate strategy, right? Is we can either defer the strategy, um, until sometime when the new, when a new board is constituted. Or we can sort of, I don't want to say, um, hunt, but leave open a suite of auctions. And then, once the new board is constituted, bring forth a specific Hakone recommendation at some later date. And that could be us if we're still pertaining as your consultants, or it could be your staff since we've set the larger context of the strategy. But that, that's a big piece of the real estate strategy is how you unlock the value of Hakone.
Okay. Well, we will discuss internally and, um, get back to, to you.
Okay. All right. Then I have nothing else other than a big mahalo. Been a real pleasure working with this group and, um, uh, hopefully we'll see you again in about a week.
Yes, thank you.
Mahalo.
Okay, we're going to move on on our agenda, taking you to B three. A revision to the Office of Hawaiian Affairs Board of Trustees bylaws, standing committee change, splitting of the Committee on Resource Management into the Committee on Budget and Finance and the Committee on Investment and Land Management.
Madam Chair, I'd like to move to approve a revision to the Office of Hawaiian Affairs Board of Trustees bylaws to spread the committee on resource management into the Committee on Budget and Finance and the Committee on Investment and Land Management as set forth in attachment A.
Second. This is the first reading we, we require to, and this is why we're also having a meeting next week. Any discussion for the motion?
Roll call. Also, no one has signed up to speak on this item. Trustee Ahuna is excused. Trustee Akaka?
Aye.
Trustee Akina?
Aye.
Trustee Alapa? Trustee Galutaria?
Aye.
Um, I just want to say.
Trustee Souza?
Aye.
Trustee Trask?
No.
Trustee Wahee?
Yes.
Chair Hulu Lindsey?
Yes.
You have seven yes and one aule.
Thank you. Uh, we're going to move to B nine.
Madam Chair, I'd like to move to approve additional funding to organizations awarded partial grant funding on June nineteenth, twenty twenty-four for, um, Pumu Bai Bai Na'ao educational resources grants from solicitation twenty-four zero one point zero point zero one published February twelfth, twenty twenty-four and Ho'omohala Bai Bai Ohana, Ohana Economic Stability Grant from solicitation twenty-four um, zero seven point zero point zero one published February twelfth, two thousand and twenty-four totaling one million nine hundred seventy-six thousand two hundred and sixteen dollars and fifty-three cents from fiscal year twenty twenty-five cooperating budget as listed in the table below.
Do I have a second? Okay, thank you. So it's been moved and seconded. Any discussion?
Okay, yeah, how, how, yeah, I'm coming. Is he going to call a vote and I never respond? I just said that I-
Trustee? Just- Trustee Trask, you have a question on this item?
Just take me out. She's not, she's not.
Any discussion after the motion?
Roll call vote. No one has signed up to speak on this item. Trustee Ahuna is excused. Trustee Akaka?
Aye.
Trustee Akina?
Aye.
Trustee Alapa?
Aye.
Trustee Galutaria?
Aye.
Trustee Souza?
Aye.
Trustee Trask? Trustee Wahee?
Yes.
Chair Hulu Lindsey?
Yes.
Trustee Trask?
Oshide.
We have seven yes votes.
Thank you. Moving on to item ten of B, Trustee Wahee?
Madam Chair, I'd like to move to approve additional funding to organizations awarded partial funding on September twelfth, twenty twenty-four for, um, Hola, Hola de Kanaka Physical, Spiritual, Mental and Emotional Health Grants from Solicitation Number twenty-four zero three point zero point zero one published February twelfth, two thousand and twenty-four. And, um, Ho'omohala Bai Bai Kaiu Kai Au Lu Community Economic Development Grant from Solicitation twenty-four zero eight point zero point zero one published February twelfth, two thousand and twenty-four. Um, Aina, Ho'opula Pula Hawaiian Homestead Community Grants from Solicitation twenty-four fourteen point zero point zero one published February twelfth, twenty twenty-four and Hola Kalahui Vulnerable Populations Grants from Solicitation twenty-four fifteen point zero point zero one published February twelfth, twenty twenty-four totaling two million four hundred sixty-three thousand nine hundred and eighty-five dollars and eighty-nine cents as listed on the table below.
Do I have a second?
Again.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion?
Roll call. No one has signed up to speak on this item. Trustee Ahuna is excused. Trustee Akaka?
Aye.
Trustee Akina?
Aye.
Trustee Alapa?
Aye.
Trustee Galutaria?
Aye.
Trustee Souza?
Aye.
Trustee Trask has logged off. Trustee Wahee?
Yes.
And Chair Hulu Lindsey?
Yes.
Seven yes votes.
Thank you. Action item.
Madam Chair, I'd like to move to approve the awarding of additional Olaki Kanaka Physical, Spiritual, Mental and Emotional Health Grants from Solicitation Number twenty-four zero three point zero point zero one published February twelfth, two thousand and twenty-four and Ho'omohala Bai Bai, um, Kai Au Lu Economic Stability Grants from Solicitation twenty-four zero eight point zero point zero one published February twelfth, twenty twenty-four. Um, totaling two million four hundred and fifty thousand two hundred and ninety-five dollars as listed in the table below.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Roll call vote.
No one has signed up to speak on this item. Trustee Ahuna is excused. Trustee Akaka?
Aye.
Trustee Akina? Trustee Alapa?
Yes.
Trustee Galutaria? Trustee Souza? Trustee Trask has logged off. Trustee Wahee? Chair Hulu Lindsey?
Yes.
You have seven yes votes.
Thank you. Um, moving on to action item twenty-four fifty-three, Trustee Wahee?
Madam Chair, I'd like to move to approve revisions to, to the Native Hawaiian Trust Fund Investment Policy Statement that adopts a new investment program structure from a manager, manager's implementation to a nondiscretionary investment consultant approach as set forth in attachment A as amended.
Do I have a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion, trustees? Roll call vote.
No one has signed up to speak on this item. Trustee Ahuna is excused. Trustee Akaka?
Aye.
Trustee Akina? Trustee Alapa?
Yes.
Trustee Galutaria?
Aye.
Trustee Souza? Trustee Trask is logged off. Trustee Wahee?
Yes.
Chair Hulu Lindsey?
Yes.
You have seven yes votes.
Thank you. Moving on to three C. Presentation on Hawaiian Cultural Affairs Team and Structure. Hailema Farden, Director of our Hawaiian Cultural Affairs.
Lilina Kialoa, Chair and Trustees. Um, thank you for giving me some time to share a little bit more about the, the, the group, um, under the Senior Director of Hawaiian Cultural Affairs. Sarakia, he once said, language is the vehicle by which culture, culture is transmitted. And I would contend that our heart is our culture. Um, that is the, that is the gift that we serve our people, our beneficiaries. And it is commendable that our trustees have been so bold to create the position of the Senior Director of Hawaiian Cultural Affairs. And I thank you for the opportunity for allowing me to serve our people, our beneficiaries in this role. And yet, um, in the seven months that I've been here, there's so much demand on this office. And some of it is fun, exciting stuff, and some of it is hard work. Among the other work that we have as just administrators with the Office of Hawaiian Affairs. And with that, um, I kindly propose to you a little step forward in being able to hire a team. And so if I can ask the slides to be put forward. So this is my current position. We are looking forward to, um, shortly announcing the application process to hire a Director of Hawaiian Ethos. And, um, when that director is hired, I would want to in, in, include that director in hiring the person to whom he or she reports, and that would be the Hawaiian Cultural, uh, Operations Consultant. And as I mentioned, the demand, you, you saw on your report submitted by Kauhana, there, the many things that have been engaged. It doesn't capture everything, but it's been quite a bit. And it's been wonderful that our beneficiaries have, have realized, we have, uh, we've been checking, uh, looking at different perspectives through culture and how we've been looking at it. I even had a conversation with previous Kauhana Sylvia to, my question to her, why is there no strategy on our, um, on our, uh, yeah, money mauliola on culture? And she, and she said, her answer was correct, and we want to see everything through the lens of culture. And, and yet, until you have a strategy si- situated in that place, we will have no measurement by which we can actually measure the success and how are we advancing? Within, among our family here at OHA, Ohana, folks have asked for cultural classes or learnings to strengthen um, who they are as Hawaiians or, or actually servants of Hawaiians, our beneficiaries. We've already included, and thanks to Kapolnui, um, Kehao helping push this along, we have our Kaukalai Kalolo every first day of the week and last day of the week. Um, to, well, recognize the beginning of the day at noon, although we're at twelve thirty. And then there are other, uh, items that we have, constant translation requests, as well as being able to engage with our community, with our beneficiaries in some of the needs they have. I think I was sharing with, uh, Chair that, um, I saw on Facebook where there was one of our beneficiaries holding up his OHA registration card and saying, I've asked someone for help in helping me learn my language and OHA was not able to provide this. So I reached out to that person and hoping that we can build a structure where we will take care of things, requests like this. But not only that, take care of ourselves. You hear on the airplanes, put the oxygen mask on yourself before you do on the children. And all those kinds of, kind of weird for us culturally because we take care of our Kiki first. Um, but yet the understanding is we have to be able to strengthen ourselves. And that means whether you're Hawaiian or not, serving in the Office of Hawaiian Affairs, you should be able to, um, at least communicate even basically in Hawaiian, opening your, um, your statements, your greetings with the proper greeting. And whenever you're somewhere, you would know what to do, what is appropriate. It's something that we all knew at one time, and it's something we should reconnect. So this is the structure that, the temporary structure that we're working on. Let me have the next slide, please. Just to give you an idea, because I, I know that you're probably wondering, okay, what does this mean by ethos? So the slide that I prepared kind of gives a definition that's in the, um, job description. Director of Hawaiian Ethos is responsible for institutionalizing and upholding the ethos, which I have a definition before. Um, uh, below, cultural ethos refers to shared beliefs, attitudes and values that define a culture or society and influences practices and customs. And so I provided this, the kuliana of the directive ethos, it's on your chart. If you want, I could read it all, but I, I know time is so precious, but it's there, um, for you to all to read. And then the next slide, the final slide, is the, um, key part of the job description for the, the next position. If we can see the next slide, please. I'm sure it's in your packet, however, so you all have it on the packet. So I, I'm happy to entertain any questions. I'm, I, I'm not, I'm not, um, the miracle worker. I'll do my best, but I do need a team. I do need support and, and and I will be so bold to say that at a certain point, I would come before you all and ask for more positions as we do strengthen our kuliana and our work. But right now, this is the team we request to build. Thank you. Mahalo Nui.
Thank you, Hailema. And thank you for all you do out in our community on our behalf. So happy to have culture representing us. Um, next on the agenda is community concerns. Lehua, do we have anyone signed up to speak under this item?
We don't have anyone signed up to speak on this item.
Akioni?
Madam Chair, sorry, just want to go back to earlier. I might have missed a reason. I just wanted you to clarify why uh, we deferred items three B, one, two, and four, five, six to, is that October thirty-first meeting?
Yeah.
Was, was there a reason for that, Chair?
I'm, I'm consulting with Board Counsel on, uh, the, the description that I shared yesterday.
About, sorry?
About the moratorium.
Okay, and we'll be provided with those documents prior to the meeting, next meeting?
Hopefully, yeah?
Yes or no, Chair?
I'm not the, the attorney, but yes, I asked him for next week.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, um, if no more community concerns, uh, we can adjourn. I'll entertain a, a motion to adjourn.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that we adjourn. A roll call vote?
Trustee Ahuna is excused. Trustee Akaka?
Aye.
Trustee Akina?
Aye.
Trustee Alapa?
Aye.
Trustee Galutaria?
Aye.
Trustee Souza? Trustee Trask is not on. Trustee Wahee?
Yes.
Chair Hulu Lindsey?
Yes.
We have seven yes votes. We are adjourned.
Thank you.